Couple mines.
This is not round.
It looks good that you're playing nicely as you go along too. Man, there's been times that we've spent things in the middle of projects just because it's like alright, dress it up, make it look like, you know, anybody tries by the way we're really trying, so.
Alright, we'll call the meeting to order. Start with the pleasure of regions.
Pleasure of regions. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, et cetera.
We'll have a moment of silence, remembrance of Elena Benson, who was our teacher aide at Townsend Elementary School for several years. Okay, thank you. Alright, we have the approval of the minutes from September 3rd, right? Yeah, September 3rd.
Motion to approve, written.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I do.
Were there any questions or comments on the, or not comments, but any questions on the CSE CPSD recommendations? Do I have a motion to accept us? Commended?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, closed. Carry. Alright, we are up for public comment. Do we have any students here? Would you just like to state your name?
I'm a ward in common.
Welcome.
I'm Katie.
Welcome. And no, no comments? No? Alright, we'll go on to four A discussion items. We have the facilities committee meeting tomorrow at 5:30. These are just reminders, the policy committee on Tuesday, September 24th at 5:30. That's gotta be winding down, doesn't it?
January, remember, January.
We, there's also an educational forum, and that's gonna be held in Oneonta High School on September 30th. If anyone was interested in going, we do need to RSVP very soon, so if you can let Cory know. And business cards for the New York State School Boards Association Conference. I believe I might be the only one that has some leftover, so.
I have some left on this.
And Marilyn might have a question. I'll probably need more.
Probably on that topic. I need to replace my ID. Do we have to have, yeah, we had.
They should give us ID when we, yeah, when we, yep, when we get there, I think we'll get it.
Probe that.
Yep, we'll get, probably get anyone there. We have a scholastic achievement dinner layout that Cory has provided. If anybody wants to change it, our last discussion was if we wanted to be a little bit more involved. We have the table, so the students are actually walking in front of our area. Change there. But I know it was kind of possibly greeting them at the door. I like that idea.
We're over here by the dessert table, right?
Yeah. Will that be the door that gets me greeting everybody at? And then if anybody chose to hand certificates, we can let Mr. Thomas know.
Be great to have you help.
Did we get into, we were gonna have an agenda with this, right?
The program page.
Yeah, okay.
We could easily change the introduction to have both principals there instead of Mr. Thomas. And if you wanted to read any of the student names for the superintendent awards, we can move you to the end with him.
I think it's really up to Larry and staff to, I mean, to let us know. We're, I mean, I think everybody would like to help any way, shape, or form, but it's up to you guys. We don't wanna make it clunky either. I mean, if you have something that's well worked out, and you have a spot that we would fit, I would volunteer to help anyway. But if, if not, and it flows good, the last thing we wanna do, we talked about, is these are really service awards for the students and the staff, and that connection, so we don't wanna, we don't wanna be at that level, any way, shape, or form, as I think is what we're talking about. So if there's, greeting was a great idea, I think.
I agree with you.
Be greeters there, or do something simple like that, you know, we don't obviously need any spotlight.
Yeah.
That's a student activity.
Because part of, part of the reward for the teachers is handing that certificate to the students who they were responsible in imparting that education in. Well, if I need a little help with the superintendent ones, would you guys help me out with that one? And that way the teachers can do their own thing. And then, but I know last year when we did it, I kinda walked around the tables and said hi to folks. And I don't know if you guys want to do the greeting at the doors, that might be, might be a nice thing too. Nice touch, just to say hello to people as they come in.
Either do the doors or do the same thing, travel the floor.
Right.
One of the.
Yeah.
Alright.
Feel confident we're behind you. You may have to turn and take a good look, but we're behind you.
I, you always have one way or the other.
Did you do this? Uh, that's something I've had. Were you inclined to sit where the students walk in front of you? That's normally where the faculty would sit during the ceremony, and you would sit on the other side. So I've got, oh, okay. These were changes I made after last year's from discussion we had after.
So we, you're talking about putting us next to the risers, just reversing where we're sitting?
Right, so the students would be walking in front of you, rather than in front of all their teachers, to get their certificate. And the teachers would just be coming from the other side to the podium. Right to the podium?
It's up to you guys to look at it and.
Yeah.
Okay. It's, I think what'll, personally, for whatever makes it flow easiest for the students and the staff.
Just to have it well attended. You know, I understand that the sports sometimes, you know, conflict with that evening, you know, somebody's out, but it's very nice to see the kids, what they've accomplished.
Right, and I almost wanna take the focus off the students' achievements.
Right.
So I'd rather.
Alright, the other thing we have up for discussion is the ticket sales. Meg was gonna be late this evening, so I don't know if you wanna wait till she gets back, or you wanna start the conversation. Then if anything we need further, we can ask Mr. Thomas to possibly have Meg look that up for us and bring it back at the next meeting.
I don't know, I, I can get it started. I was kinda beating the drum on this, I guess, a little bit. And it just seems.
We just started the ticket sales conversation. So these are ticket sales for anyone coming into football, wrestling, or basketball. I think those are the only ones that we actually charge for students and residents. So is that something that we wanna continue? What we pay out for someone to have to sit at those tables, is it worth the revenue that we're bringing in?
And that's, my feeling is, from a parental level, for a supporter of athletics, things like that, forever we've been paying to attend certain events at the school. And I don't know if that's necessarily be, because we have to have somebody here to create a common point of entry, for security purposes, things like that, if that's the case, then a lot of this discussion's gonna be moved. Many people who attend these events are parents of students who are already, you know, making a large commitment, whether they're buying cleats for these players, they're buying, you know, additional mouth guards because the kids can't keep track of theirs. Uh, you know, sneakers for basketball are a hundred and thirty a pop to get you out the door. I mean, it's, it's getting ridiculous. And then to travel all over the season, you're talking about gas money, and then even bring them to a home game where they have to pay two dollars for an adult and a dollar per student. If you've got, I'm thinking of a couple of families where that's at least a ten dollar night, before you have the kids pulling on your legs and wanting concessions. You know, so for my purposes, I would like to see these events open without cost to supporters of, you know, the various teams who will be playing. And further, I mean, I know we have a wellness policy, and we want to encourage our youth to be active through participation, whether it be in sports or anything that improves both physical and mental health. What if, you know, the cost of attendance to parents is something that may discourage a low-income household from letting their kids participate? You know, there are those other acts, you know, to, to just pull the thread a little bit further, so.
It's, it's one of the things where to reinforce it, it's just very inconsistent. There's only a couple sports areas and a, and a couple varsity sports areas that you're charging for, but not all of them. So I don't know the background of it as to how they were selected or why, but it's definitely inconsistent. When you're, when you're not charging across the board for entry in all sports levels, or all sports events at a varsity level, and you're just selecting a few of them, I just, I have to ask why. I don't understand it, and especially if the financials really are backwards on that, why would we be doing that? And that's, that's just a question that, I don't have all that background on that, but I, I agree with Paul in the fact that if we can open up all of our sports, so that they're free for parents and relatives and any spectators to attend, we should, we should, and we can do that, and it makes sense, and we're not hurting other people by taking away incomes by doing that. Um, we should, we should encourage that. I think it's just a day and age where we, we go to other schools, we travel, and you don't have the same fees.
Right.
So it doesn't, it's one of the things where consistency would make, would make good sense here.
I had thought about why, why, why some sports and not the others, and then I got thinking, no, because we pay for refs in other sports that we don't charge for. Cause I was thinking, maybe that's what, you know, the offset of the revenue that's coming in is helping to cover those costs. But that's not the case if we're paying that right back out to, for someone to take the tickets in the first place, and now we're really wage for that. So, yeah, that.
We would still have to employ chaperones for these events, correct?
I would think, yeah.
We're not pulling, um, you know, we're talking ticket sales directly for, for the public, not, you know, the people we need staff to make the events go.
And I think that's where, I, I think we'll need to reach out to you to find out what the administrative staff and what the athletic staff sees that they need, you know, as far as help during certain games. Is it because the football games are more well-attended, there's a lot more people, they might need more chaperones?
If I understood it right, I mean, wrestling was a great generator of revenue.
But that includes fees. That included a lot of the team fees in there as well, so I don't know if that actually is ticket sales alone. I think we'd have to get the breakdown on that.
I think, I think what I would ask for my comfort level, cause I don't have all the backgrounds on how that operates, is I'd ask Larry to work with your athletic director and, and your varsity and assistant coaches, and give us a proposal that says, a recommendation that says, does this make sense, or does it not make sense? And just address some of these questions, and if you have a recommendation, we could move as quick as, you know, the next board meeting on this.
We could, like, we could try to cross things out, and I know you've done already some work on that anyway. And then what we could do, i- i- if this is where you're going, is we could say, if we didn't charge anything, this is the outlay that the district still has to deal with, for security, for chaperones, so forth and so forth and so forth. And, um, and then maybe we could also try to give you like a middle-of-the-road piece that if we wanted to do a proposal that's halfway there, whether it be to include all, just for all varsity sports, or, you know, just some, just give you some sort of an idea of what you could do. So you've either got nothing, where we are now, and what we need, and, you know, this is a possible proposal. And at least that way you've got some places to make some selections to think, to, to think about.
One question I have, if, if, if spectators show up and they don't have money, what's the recourse? If they try to walk beyond that, that table without paying?
I don't know, to be quite honest with you. I mean, I suspect what happens is they get encouraged to be turned away, I would think, but.
Right.
If, if it's a paying one.
Because there's a ticket that says, "Thank you, senior citizens, you don't have to pay anymore."
Yeah.
That's handed out at that table. I mean, and it's a courtesy to, you know, certain people, whether it be grandparents or things like that. But, you know, if it's arbitrary as to who receives those, then that could be a gift that, you know, in order to the benefit of people just kind of indiscriminately, and.
Even, even your student body having to support your varsity teams at that level, you ask, where's the collaboration in that? If, if a child is downtown and his parents are at home and they wanna come to attend the game, what, you know, does that make sense when you really wanna build up to your varsity level and have that community and school support? I just think that we might be missing that, that human element of the ticket-taking and chaperones and all those pieces, we're not gonna understand. So we're gonna have to rely on you and staff to just let us know what that, what that really, what those impacts would be if we said, nope, we're not gonna, we're not gonna generate revenue from those anymore.
We can give you the data.
I think there's definitely more there than dollars and cents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a human element that we don't understand, but I think, I think we should be looking at a recommendation. Really, when you prioritize a one, two, and three options, I, I would hope that you guys could say, from our athletics, this is a higher priority to go this direction. From our school safety, this is a higher priority, go that, you know, give us some guidance on that, so we can, we can make a good decision.
And then realistically, Larry, were you at the last meeting when Junie was here? No, no, I don't think so, and that's what the catalyst for this conversation was, was when we had the gentleman talking about the prohibiting access to the high school for basketball events, despite the fact this is where the handicap access is, we have handicap parking out there, but forcing people through a common pinch point down at the middle school, and he said, "Well, I know you, you guys want your money." And it, that's what really kinda got the wheels spinning is, well, yeah, well, okay, first we've, you know, potentially maybe denied somebody that, but at the same, at the same time, why are we just charging for certain events, not others, and why at all?
There's, there's probably some historical reason, you know?
Right.
None of us know, cause.
It's the way it's always been done for so long, yeah, but.
Yeah, we can take a look at it.
And I would think in that, a recommendation of what type of staffing you needed all the events.
Right.
Right.
Oh, absolutely.
Cause it doesn't matter if it's, you know, if it's a baseball game, or if it's a basketball, there's a certain level, I mean, I can understand crowd may increase.
Oh, no, I've seen.
But you're gonna want somebody.
Yeah.
Just.
Now, do, does our varsity club do some of the concessions? Does anybody know?
Either that, or.
Student council, that's right. For the football games.
And this is a totally separate discussion.
You have input on that?
I know, right now there's no varsity club at all. There's no advisor for varsity club.
Okay, so there we go. I know that used to be the varsity club were the ones that did the concessions, and that helped pay for things that might not have been covered by budget expenses, they could, you know, contribute. So, yeah, that's definitely something we wanna look into.
They moved away when they got the vending machines at varsity club. Cause when I was in school in Crane, when you called, we actually had to kinda go into games and work for the, be part of the varsity club.
Yeah.
Few years after we came through, they got the vending machines, and I think at the time, most of the revenue that came from there went to the varsity club. That was kind of the deal thing, and then.
I think that that's what it is for student council, they work it, but that's their revenue for whatever they're gonna do or buy or merchandise. It isn't really come, you know. And I understand the three, but it would almost seem silly to go ahead and take, it's either like do away with it or keep it as it is, but to add and start charging for the other sports, routine-wise, the community is not gonna turn out. Especially with YouTube, you can watch football from YouTube, you know, football, all the home games, you can do it for basketball, all of that. So I, I'm curious mostly to know where it started and why these sports, which could be something, and to look at eliminating it, but yet, we must be budgeted for chaperones at the sporting events already this year. I mean, must be in our budget, based off of last year, so.
But the other part is, how much of, were we counting on these ticket sales as a revenue line item? I mean, because, because, I mean, if we're going out putting together a budget, and, and counting on revenue from tax dollars, well, how much of it is defrayed from ticket sales because of?
And I think, I think these guys can quickly produce all that.
Yeah, I mean, we, this is on, we just want to have the conversation.
I don't think I'd be in favor of blanketing all the sports and saying we're gonna charge for them all.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think that's the opposite direction where we're thinking, so. Let, let the staff tell us what the recommendations are.
And the school groups are the only ones that sell anything in our onigas?
It's fifty-fifty.
Booster Club does a fifty-fifty.
I know that's been that way for too many years. I wanna say how many years.
I don't, I actually, yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Booster Club did away with that, and families, moms did it and gave the money back into the football program, because we didn't want to, when I was on the Booster Club board, solicit kids out there, you know, it's, it was a gambling discussion. So Booster Club actually did away with it. They don't get, I think that the moms do it, and it goes back into the football program.
By the end of the year, they get the player shirts.
Shirts and stuff like that.
At the end of the year, they quit.
Yep.
So I think that's, and it also helps to pay for the, they do the spaghetti dinners every Thursday night.
Yeah, it's a big effort there, they put forward.
So Booster Club moved away from it, the moms still did it, and it benefits, it then, does benefit football program and the things they do for it, but it's not a Booster Club thing anymore.
Alright.
We'll give you some data. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I think that was it on there. Okay, we're up to correspondence. There's gonna be a Walk for Hunger. If anyone wants to participate in that, they need to contact.
Anne Hartman.
Anne Hartman, okay. That's coming right up, isn't it, September 19th? Okay. Alright, alright, are there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, we have two additions. One is a consent agenda item, it would be added to number seven F, personnel appointments. And it is a substitute custodial worker effective tomorrow for Rhonda McPlonan. tomorrow for Rhonda McLennan. And the other item we have is not consent, it would be item number eight C. Mr. Williams is asking us to change the bus driver recognition date from October 16th to October 23rd, if that's possible.
And then, I believe that to be October 16th, there's going to be several bus drivers that aren't going to be there, so I don't want them to be there.
All right, so we have the consent agenda, the financial reports, and we have the transfer funds, players surplus, we have a resignation, and this is for retirement purposes only. Karen Ball will be resigning from the piano accompanist as of September 26th, and I believe she's in here later on reappointing. We have appointments, Thomas Winfield, substitute custodial worker, Gabrielle, I'm not sure, Jin, does anybody?
I think it's Lassin.
Lassin, okay. Sorry, I really apologize, Gabrielle, if you're watching. Substitute teacher, Jessica White, substitute teacher, and substitute teacher aide, Madison LaBarge, substitute teacher aide, Karen Ball again as the pianist, fishing club, Nathan Cutting and Jean Marie Conley, and then added Rhonda McLennan as substitute custodial. And then we also have the approval of the substitute rosters. I believe that's it. Yes. Are there any comments, concerns on the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie. Eight new business, accepting donations. We have $149.19 from Pampered Chef to the Travel Club, $370 from parents from proceeds of applying in breakfast to the class of 2020, a large amount of school supplies from Wayne Bank to Townsend Elementary School. I've seen that in the paper, but it was very nice. Do we have a motion to accept those donations?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie. Emergency probationary teacher appointment. This is for Amanda Bauer, who went from, I believe, second grade teacher to special education teacher. So, a change in the probationary terms. Do we have a motion to accept that?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. And then eight C, excuse me, this will be for the bus driver appreciation day, moving that to Wednesday, October 23rd.
I can't make that one now, but I had the last two years, I can't do that date, so.
Okay.
If they can all be there, that's the most important thing, so represent us well, will you?
All right, do we have a motion to accept that change?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. All right, and that's at 9:00 AM if somebody else has time to drop by. We usually have the Townsend School over there performing the music. It's really nice.
Select chorus.
Yes. Yeah, oh, one time it was the...
Banned.
Band, yeah.
It was banned. It sounded pretty good there.
All right, we are up to administrative remarks. Wow.
So, first thing I want to say is it's great to be back and thank you very much for the board understanding my pre-arranged trip and, but it was good to be back. We had contact with these folks and Corey and some of you, actually, every day while I was away. And so, that actually, I think that was good because it kept me in a loop. I didn't come back and really feel like, gee, what's going on? Or, you know, didn't, I didn't feel fear or anything of that sort, that, you know, things, what was happening. And to that particular point, I do want to say that I'm very proud of the people over at my right. We worked hard all summer long to put a good team together to start the year on, on what we hoped would be the right foot. And from everything that I heard and that I saw and that I read back and forth in terms of our, our comments to each other and everything, I really believe they performed marvelously. And today is my first day back, but I did go down, spend time at the elementary school. I spent time walking around the high school. And, you know, we, we never go without some kind of issues. I mean, that's part of the business that we're in. But one of the things that I did hear several times from staff members was accolades to the team over here to my right. And so, I do have a couple of other things to report to you, but I just want to thank them for the service that they put forward. And we really worked hard to start the year off. We worked all summer long to do that. So, again, I'm, I'm just very proud of them, so. But we will start off with, with Meg, if that's okay, if you have anything that you want to talk about or bring out to anybody. I only did that because Ryan's at the end and I didn't, I know he didn't walk into the...
Our auditorium for the Controller's Office and our independent auditor are both continuing. They spend some time in the district and out. I'm hoping the independent audit at least will wrap up in the next few weeks. The Controller's Office will probably extend a little longer. Tax collection is going well. We did not, have not to this point borrowed against the revenue anticipation note that you did authorize. We're continuing to watch it closely, but tax collections are flowing in and the county was, I think, as I mentioned at the last meeting, successfully getting the bills out by the first, so that's going well. We completed and Larry certified our annual report with the state for the part of the process of closing out the 18, 19 school year. I'm sure there will be much back and forth with them as they review it, but we did at least get the first rendition filed.
And Meg, thank you very much for being proactive on that tan, just in case we needed. It was there.
I guess it ran through my mouth.
Yep.
But yes, it was kind of the same topic as it takes, you know, it's, there's a process involved issuing it, so if we needed it, we needed to be prepared. And so, we continue to watch the cash flow and...
Very proactive, good.
Yes, and with the county, the uncertainty of whether the tax bills were going to get out on time or whether they were going to be two to three weeks late.
But they, they worked together and got it done.
They did, yeah. Nice, thank you.
Professional development has really got off to a great start this year. We've already been in contact and booked on our days with Dr. Lori Strong, who's going to be working with the elementary school teachers in training the teachers and a, a method of teaching literacy to kids at the tier-one level. So, she's going to actually start on Friday with that. We've got Gretchen Oliver, who's going to be working with middle school on understanding by design. We've got Dr. Seth Aldrich, who's going to be coming in and helping the elementary school teachers looking, look at the, the results of the FAS bridge testing that we're doing for the first time this year. We're testing all kids K through 11 in literacy. As the years go on, we'll be able to follow the track of a child as they move up through the district, a progress monitor, so that we can step in a lot faster than we've been doing in the past. So, it's all very exciting with all the professional developments going on. And I'm so thrilled that the, the teachers themselves are really thrilled about the professional development they're getting. See, it is very, very worthwhile. So, we'll start to reap those benefits very, very rapidly.
And credit goes out to the teachers as well. Read on the website today about the improvement to the state testing.
It was absolutely phenomenal. There was wonderful. Grade seven, kudos to the grade seventeen, absolutely fantastic results. But as I was saying to the grade five team yesterday, or Tuesday, to meet, oh, yeah, Tuesday was yesterday, that they doubled the number of kids proficient in writing, which is tremendous with the SRSD writing training that they got last year. They were able to transfer, to teach the kids how to write and to really enjoy writing. And that really paid off. When the state test came through, we doubled the number of kids from last year who were proficient. But she's gone through also. That was great. So, they're raring to go, and not only are they raring to go, but the grade fourteen are raring to know what it was that they did. And of course, the grade sixteen will have those grade five children to build on this year. So, it's all looking good.
Very good news. And I think it was like 81 additional students participated in the test?
In the state test, we, we, we're almost to the 95% rate that the, the state wants. We're, we're not there yet, but just to get that many more kids, we were way above the state goal for Walton, which is absolutely phenomenal. It actually gives us an idea of where our kids are. When the kids take the state test, we, we have a much better idea of what we need to do to help children. And we know where we are in our standing. So, instead of being kind of like down at the bottom with the, you know, the Boise District or the Squick District, we found that we weren't tall, we were way up there. So, we're very fine.
Good place to be, thank you. Good.
I want to talk about a couple of programs that I'm hoping that we can take advantage of to support our kids. The first is Trauma Classroom, which would support Vanessa Mel, our ag teacher, it would support her animal science classes, small animal care. They get a trout pet, they raise it all the way into a, I think it's a fingerling, and they would actually release it here in Delaware. So, that's something that I'm working with Vanessa on to push forward for our high school classes. And also, Adam and I have been working together with the Delaware County of Mental Health to kind of work with them for a pilot program, to have a satellite office here in the high school to provide services for both middle school and high school kids who don't have the transportation to get to the actual mental health facility. That is in its initial stages. We have a memorandum of understanding that, you know, we're going to review next week, but we're pretty excited about that, to be able to provide support for the kids who can't always get it, whether, you know, for whatever reason. Those are two things that we're pretty, and I'm pretty excited about.
The Trauma Classroom, the Trauma Classroom's free, right? That's a grant? That's awesome. I was wondering when we were going to get into that, because that's, that's a great opportunity, because we live in this Petri dish of watershed, watershed management, the environmental science fields. So, it's great to take advantage of that. Awesome.
I just had a question. With a representative being here, they'll still have to go through the same process, the parents will have to go through the same process for scheduling to see that individual? Or will that be tied in with maybe our guidance counselors and CSE or CPSC?
I think a combination.
So, in other districts I know that do it, it's, there's always the parent involvement piece has to be there. So, that scheduling, you know, goes through and with the parent, and then it's convenient time for what's moving to the school, too. So, there's always that parent piece that has to be there for, for it to the next level.
I think that that's a great idea. We're just not limiting to only children who can't get there, right? Because some children, even though they can, it should be available to all, or, okay.
And part of it is to, to try to get rid of the stigma of, you know, you're walking down, maybe you'll show you take the left, and all your friends keep going, they know you're going to a mental health thing. And, you know, there's still a good portion of our population who sees that as a bad thing, where here, it's just going to another room in the school and getting the help you need, and it's...
And at this point, I'm really, really talking one day a week at this point, right?
Yeah, we're, it's, it's very initial stages, one day a week, and we're not, we think of you for a full day. Those details all have to be worked out.
The nice part is the, the other avenues we looked at in the past were grant-funded, where once the grant was gone, you know, we were, we were, you know, I don't want to say stuck, because it's a need, but then we're, we're the ones who have to pay for it. It's funny, and it's, it's a big issue with anything. And this is, you know, they're willing to do it, they've done it with other places and...
Nice. It's a benefit.
It's long-term as opposed to after two years, the grant's gone and now we're, we don't have it anymore.
And this year, convenience makes the access so much more available for kids and families.
Nice.
Anything else I could?
It's been a really fun couple of weeks at Townsend School. The first thing I just wanted to mention, we have our, we had our old base kickoff event, which is our anti-gol program on Tuesday. And it's really cool because they've done so much work to make it fun for the kids. They play kids bop music when they're bopping in and dancing. And the big theme this year for the older kids was be the change you wish to see in the world. And when we delved into that concept, they really understood what that meant and what that looks like from the individual perspective or the team perspective. So, that was a lot of fun. The kids really, really enjoyed it. Rhonda got to see our gingerbread boy event.
Oh, that was so much fun.
Which is really, really cool. Just to let you guys kind of know what that is, the, the second grade teachers and classrooms bake the, not bake the cakes, but mix the cakes, all the kids, and then the cafeteria bakes the cakes. And then they make the gingerbread boy in the principal's office and decorate it so that the kindergarten kids have to go on a little hunt to find where this little gingerbread boy who was running around making bad choices gets to. So, the fifth grade classes make the little clues for the kids to find throughout the building. So, it's this really neat culminating thing that all the kids help with. And then the kids learn and tour the building. Yeah, and they can see what the office is for, you know. If you're running, you're going to get in trouble, you know, but the office is for good things, too. So, just a really cool event that the whole building...
It was. And I, I actually was dropping off my grandson. Mrs. Benferr said, "Would you be able to help us with chaperone?" And I was like, "Sure," not, not knowing what I was in for. But what really amazed me was how the teachers, like each clue that the kids had to find, once they found the clue, then they had to guess where we had to go to next. And there was this one little boy, "Oh, I know, we have to go to the library. I know, we have to go here." And everybody's like, "Yeah, that's true." We get up to the library and Mrs. Gaidel was standing next to a student who happened to be injured, and I believe truly injured, unless it was a really good cast job. Truly injured. And the moral of the story was that the gingerbread man or boy ran through the library so fast, bumped into him, caused this injury, and she had to send him right out of here. Where do you think he had to go? The principal's office. And they were like all walking up to this little boy and this, you know, the student in the wheelchair saying, "Are you okay? Are you hurt?" It was so cute. But perfect timing for, not for him to be injured, but...
If you ever wonder why I can never run in the hall, it's because of the gingerbread.
Yes, and they really, they got that, the whole concept. Kindergarteners, no kidding.
And lastly, we, just we have open house tomorrow night, 5:30 to 7:00. We have the book fair. We're going to have kind of a vendor situation in the playroom with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, 4-H, Big Buddy program, and things like that.
We're off to a good start in the middle school. The middle school staff, they're fantastic. They really make a lot of parts of my job pretty easy, which is nice. There's some other things I should have, and start helping you with, too. We had our open house, middle school and high school open house last, I guess it was last Tuesday, last week. Had a good turnout for that. We had our sixth grade orientation the week before school started, and we have 84 sixth graders, which is a large classroom. Seventy-three or seventy-four families were there, so we had a great turnout for that. We're in the process of doing our advisor adventure. We do it at each grade level. They go to, those eighth graders go to Camp Hilltop, which is, I think it's between Hancock and Deposit. I'm not sure which town it's actually in. And it's a lot of community and team-building activities. And we do that with our sixth and seventh graders. We don't go there, but we also go, that's in the coming weeks. Different staff members run different activities and they, they work through different problems as a team to try to get through them. It's neat to see, see a lot of kids that you might not necessarily think have leadership qualities, really show that they do. And it's, it's a different setting than the classroom, which is, it's always fun to see the kids in a different setting. Our new, our new teachers are off to a good start. In, in the classroom, we've seen what they're doing. And I think we got very lucky with filling those positions. Excited about working with them. Excited about working with them. Last thing, we have our first six to eight activity night Friday. We usually have a pretty good turnout for that, the sixth graders really flock to that, especially the first few, have a good time.
I have been burning a lot. I'm beating a lot of my steps in, but it's...
Do you have a fit?
I do. I had to get one, I told myself. I honestly, it's between Adam and Artie both, it's been really great. I've got a lot of support from the two of them, but they're also giving me a breathing and a handle. It's been on, on things and the last time I had to see them was I had started dance as a part of judge. It was, I was told once school starts, I'm going to start getting it. That is true. Anticipation was more killing me. Just wanted to get started. Once again, I felt really comfortable and everybody's staff, everything has been really supportive. One of the things that Artie and Adam started last year at the middle school was using Google Forms for discipline, which we moved to an introduced to the high school this year. It's really convenient, especially coming from teaching, teaching wise. It's a really quick, a lot quicker way, a lot to get the information to me about the discipline issues. It's an easier way for me to touch base with them. We have to take care of things more efficiently through the stream. It's a whole process. We just introduced that this year to the high school as well. So we're looking forward to somehow, just as a person, I don't know. They came up with the tools.
And that's something that the staff, and then it would go to you in the Google Form.
Getting rid of the physical sheet they fill out a lot of times. Now it's not having to come down to the office. Stu has made a bad choice or certain bad choices. They now do it online and it gets emailed to, for the middle school, Ryan and I, and for the high school.
We also have a copy that goes to our secretaries. I mean, they're busy enough as it is, so they don't need to try and figure out why a kid is down there. They automatically get a copy and it's, oh, so and so's down here for discipline.
The teacher sent them down.
Yep, and so it eliminates, it's just an easier way for them to communicate.
And it's helped us a lot, even this year already, deal with things a lot quicker. Now we don't have to wait until the teacher has some time to, you know, go and talk to them or interrupt their class to find out what, what happened. They go on the computer and type it in real quick and we can, a lot of times, when they call us to tell us more about it, we can say, yeah, we handled the, here's, how we handled it.
Nice. And then that way the conversation's not taking place if there's other students or something in the office.
Really helps with the confidentiality.
I just want to say I thought the open house format was really nice, the way it was set up. I didn't make it to the middle school, but I saw Mr. Wilson, Mr. Ashlock constantly somewhere. They were all over the place, but I thought it was a good turnout and I liked the, it was laid back. It was very easy, easy to see teachers. It was just a very nice thing, I thought. And I heard a lot of good comments about it, so just nice job.
I just have three things. One of them not, one of which is not that I'm asking for an executive session, because I'm not. So, but again, I just, I just think that what's gone over the last couple of weeks speaks to the potential talent of the group that you've got, so I think they set a great tone. For me, I have been signing papers and checking in with folks over the last couple of days and that sort of thing. We did set up a meeting with the highway superintendents or are in the process of setting up that meeting with the highway superintendents to talk about what happens when inclement weather comes in and that sort of thing. I really didn't attend one last year, but we thought we ought to probably renew that relationship this year. So we're setting that up for early October, I believe, or maybe the middle of October. And then the only other thing that I just want to report to you is that I started, I sent out notice that I wanted to start putting together some coffee klatches. I did those when I was superintendent and I also did them when I was a BOSI superintendent. And I've actually got two sets of those all scheduled for the coming year. And one of them is, well, I actually have three sets of them. One of them is to talk, to sit with the high school staff. This is one day a month. We just, anybody who wants to come in, the agenda is wide open. They can talk about anything, as long as it's not about a specific individual. But I mean, if they want to talk about program, they want to ask a question about how things are done, they want to get some rationale for things, what have you, they're welcome to come in. It's like forty-five minutes to an hour and we're sitting, we'll talk about it. And sometimes you get some nice ideas from that and you get to get a sense of what's going on with folks. I'm doing the same thing at the elementary school on a different day, again, once a month. And today, I actually started my first one in the community. And we had called the Ogden Library and we said, hey, can we come down? You know, sometimes folks feel a little intimidated coming into a school building. So we were looking for someplace in the village and to get off campus. And so I went down there today. I was welcomed very nicely by the staff there. And they took me to a little meeting room that they have there downstairs, which was very nice. And I went down there and I actually had one person to talk with me today who came in. And we talked about a lot of things. And I want to hear what people have to say. And I hope that I get more people who come, but if I only have one, that's okay. And this person was very, very, very nice. I mean, you know, sometimes people worry that if you set up these kinds of sessions that what you get is somebody who just comes in to complain about something or somebody or something like that. And this really was not that in this case. The person came in and they said, I just kind of wanted you to get a feel for, or let you know how I feel about how things have been going with these folks. And also, this, not a person who had anything to do with the school either, by the way. It was a community person. And then we got talking about education and we got talking about, you know, have you thought about doing some programs this way or that way? And what we didn't do is we didn't try to poo poo anything. We just, it's just an opportunity to listen to what people have to say. And I had one. I'm hoping to get more than one next time around. The calendar is on the, on the website and we'll see how it goes. But for me, it's a fun event to do that. And I just want to let you know that we had our first one today. I probably could have advertised it a little bit better. I've got a couple more ideas about how to do that. But as you know, I was headed out on vacation at the time and I really didn't get a chance to do some of that and put some of that together. So we'll do a little bit better on that next time. But hey, I got one and that's a cool thing, so that's all.
That's it?
That's it.
Alright, we don't have a need for an executive session, so we have a motion to adjourn. Oh.
Was there going to be a discussion on a, any executive session on, I don't know, how am I phrasing? A word?
Oh, no, we don't need that now. That's it?
Can I ask you a question before we get, because I got lost in the parking lot. I see we have barriers.
We do have Jersey barriers that are up.
I guess, kind of lost on our circumstance.
Well, I, you know, we had a number of conversations. You're probably wondering why it's Jersey barriers and not something different. That's what I'm guessing. No? Yes?
Well, yeah, because they're...
We, they're pretty big. They're kind of massive, aren't they?
Yeah, and they're not designed for that type of application. It's different.
Well, I think, I honestly think that what we had is conversations going in a couple of directions and we talked about a couple of options. And for whatever reason, I think it ended up just focusing on the Jersey barriers and that's what we ended up with. I had thought at one point maybe we would have those lower curb. Things I had wondered about those as well and doing those instead. It just ended up with, we ended up with the Jersey barriers. I think our conversations went three or four different ways. And we've talked about this, as you know, since, for probably six months, back and forth on different things. I just think that we...
I think, well, it certainly takes care of the issue of when we were at the shared decision, community meeting. You know, the concern of people cutting through the parking lot. But aesthetically, it's certainly not aesthetically pleasing, you know, when you look out there and see these, you know, highway dividers is what I consider them. But they're not pinned or anything. They're not permanent, so maybe that's something that we can...
We might be able to come up with something a little more aesthetically pleasing and still be able to use those in a productive way. We may be able to do that. But we've got them for now and scope we're using.
Yep. So it certainly stops, and that was the whole point when, not that there's a lot of people in our audience, but it was just getting to the point where it was dangerous of people cutting through the parking lot when there was vehicles parked there. Someone would abide by it and go all the way up and around the turn and then somebody would cut through and then you're right at somebody's driver door. So that was getting to the point where it was dangerous. It doesn't leave a lot of room for people to get through, so they're having to walk down, you know, to get over the medium there.
We may have overestimated how many we really needed. And when I was looking at it the other day, it was like, or I was looking at a picture of them the other day and I was like that. Maybe there's a few more there than we need, but...
They're not permanent.
So? We'll work through it a little bit better.
Okay, does anybody have anything else?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Kevin had that.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Alright, you can hang out just for two minutes.
Alright.